I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 23 meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. At this time, if you would, join me in a prayer. Heavenly Father, we just ask that tonight, we be charged with those responsibilities to do those things that will be most pleasing to Thee and in the best interest of our city that we all love. In Your name we pray, amen.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Matt Thurton, would you call?
Alderman Blackiston.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Mitchell.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kenzie.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay, much presence. At this time, we will go to the item number three, consent agenda.
Make the motion that we accept the consent agenda as is.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, seconded by Alderman Odom, is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Item number four, presentation by North Carolina League of Municipalities, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor members of the board. As you recall, when we were reviewing the dues and subscriptions during the recent budget work sessions that we had, the board had requested some information on the North Carolina League of Municipalities' accomplishments over the past year and some of the services that they offer to municipalities. And I'm pleased to have tonight Chris Nida. He's the Director of Research and Policy Analysis at the North Carolina League of Municipalities. He's here tonight and he's got a handout for you, I think it's already at your seats, and he's going to talk over some of those items that are on the, on your sheet and then also answer any kind of questions at the board behalf. Turn it over to Chris this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevens. Thank you very much, Mayor and Alderman. Appreciate the opportunity to be here before you tonight. I am Chris Nida, Director of Research at the North Carolina League of Municipalities. I've been at the league for just about nine years now, serving all nine of those years on the Government Affairs team. And so, I do work primarily with our Legislative Advocacy Team and on Legislative Advocacy issues at the General Assembly, but the league, we do sort of pride ourselves on being a one-stop shop for municipalities. In North Carolina, we like to think we provide a wide range of services that benefit our members. And so, I was just going to touch on a few of those before I moved on to the legislative portion. We do very much appreciate New Bern's membership in the League of Municipalities. We currently have 553 municipalities in the state of North Carolina, and about 540-some are members of the North Carolina League. So, we are almost unanimous in our representation of municipalities here. As I said, we do offer a wide range of services. We do the Legislative Advocacy. We provide insurance services. One of the services I wanted to point out that I don't know, I know that I probably don't do as good of a job as talking about, as I should a lot of the times, is our debt set-off program. That's a program that is only available to league members. And what that is, is that if there are uncollected debts on the part of the town, if a citizen owes you in excess of $50, you can submit that to the debt set-off program. The league in turn works with the state of North Carolina to withhold that money from either tax returns or lottery winnings, those sorts of things, to collect those debts on your behalf and return, return those funds to our member municipalities. It's been a very successful program since its inception, I believe around 20 years ago. New Bern, just this year alone, has recovered more than $75,000, $75,085.22 from the debt set-off program, and more than $1.5 million in delinquent payments since 2001. And so, again, I think that's a successful program that we offer to our membership and just one that I did want to point out. Other services, we have, we have legal consulting available. I know that our general counsel said that she worked with your attorney, saw him on a charter revision you did in the, in the past couple of years. We do publicity on behalf of our members. We do some surveys, kind of serve as a clearinghouse of information that our membership has access to. Have several legislative and regulatory policy committees. There's a staff engineer from the city of New Bern who serves on our Regulatory Action Committee, and we're very appreciative of her participation. You know, again, events, different communications that you all should be receiving. If you're not receiving our Legislative Bulletin every Friday at a minimum, please let me or anybody from the staff know, and I'll be happy to add you to that, to that mailing list so that you do get a weekly update on what is happening at the General Assembly. As I said, we do offer insurance services, not just health, but also workers' compensation and property liability, and due to risk control, loss control, risk management as part of that. New Bern is not a participant in those pools now. And I was talking to Mr. Stevens earlier, and mentioned you were self-insured from a health perspective, which is not uncommon among our larger municipalities. But if at any time you wanted to learn more about our insurance services, we have staff on hand who are always willing to provide a quote or talk about what services we can offer in that regard. But as I mentioned, I do serve on the, on the Government Affairs Team, and that is my primary area of work. Over the past nine years or so, I've become, worked primarily on the fiscal issues, and so the ones I'm most familiar with are the ones that involve your money, your revenues, and your expenditures. And so, there's been a number of those over the past couple of years, and even this legislative session, that would affect your revenues, that we have worked on and I think have achieved a positive result for our members. One of those, House, just as an example, House Bill 497 was a bill that, as it was filed this year, would have mandated a 2 percent COLA for all retirement, all retirees, both state and local in North Carolina. We have a, a board for the local government retirement system that makes contribution rate decisions every year, and so our position legislatively was that this was an unfunded mandate from the General Assembly. If it had passed as filed, we were able to work with a legislator to get an amendment to take the local government retirement system out of that bill. If it had stayed in the bill, would have cost our local government statewide about $250 million. So with about 880 participants in the local government retirement system, $250 million spread out among those, I think it's probably safe to say the city of New Bern's, just from that alone, likely would have been in the tens of thousands of dollars annually. And so, that's just an example of one, one type of bill that we will work on from a financial perspective. I don't know, you may have been aware earlier in the year, there was a bill filed that would have provided additional tax relief for disabled veterans, which we, of course, were in support of, but found that when this property tax exemption was extended to the full value of a home, it was going to cost about $25 million for cities and counties statewide, and even more so in communities like this one that are adjacent, military bases. And so, we worked with legislators on that bill, and the way that bill exists now, there's a hold harmless provision in there from the state. So the property tax exemption is still provided, but the state has committed to holding cities and counties harmless for any loss in property tax revenue that they see as a result of that exemption. So again, just as sort of an example of the type of bill that we work on, that bill has passed the House, but it is not yet law. There's been 1,597 bills filed in the General Assembly so far this year. We've identified about 354 at least that affect cities and towns in one way or the other. And the one I did want to touch on, because it's one of our most prominent issues, and I know one I've had a lot of communication with Mr. Stevens about, is impact fees. You're all probably aware, there was a Supreme Court decision in, in August of last year regarding local governments' ability to charge whatever impact fees, capacity fees, system development fees, they're called a lot of different things around the state, in order to help new development pay upfront for growth and for the additional strains put on utility systems by new development. There was a Supreme Court case last year that potentially invalidated a lot of those fees around the state. And so, the league has really been working on that issue on two fronts. We, our insurance pools, as the insurer for the town of Carthage, who was the defendant in that case, funded the town's defense and continues to fund their legal work in that regard. The Supreme Court decision, and I'm not an attorney, so I always, I'm always nervous when I get into the legalese portion of this, but the Supreme Court decision made the ruling on the potential invalidation of the fees, remanded another portion of the case to the appeals court. The key portion of that, at least from my perspective, is the statutory limitations on how long you must repay fees if a developer were to come and ask for repayment of those fees. The league, again, funding the defense for the town of Carthage, the appeals court found in December of last year that the statute of limitations for repayment would be 10 years, which would be a really significant impact for a lot of our member municipalities around the state if a developer were to come and ask for repayment of that. We've continued to work on it from a court perspective, and just in early May, the Supreme Court granted a petition for discretionary review that the league worked on. From what my attorney colleagues tell me, they likely would not have accepted that petition if they thought the 10-year statute of limitations on repayment was an appropriate one. So we're very hopeful that that could be shortened by the court if we're not able to reach a legislative solution. But I guess I'm here in part to tell you that we are very optimistic that we can reach some kind of legislative resolution of this issue. We've had bills filed, House Bill 624 and Senate Bill 641, which preserve some authority for municipal impact fees going forward and limit the statute of limitations on repayment. We've been able to work on House Bill 436, which was a bill that was filed that would have eliminated all impact fees statewide, even for municipalities who receive special legislation in that regard. We were able to get that bill converted to a study, and so it preserves the authority to charge impact fees. Again, that's passed the House, but has not yet been acted on by the Senate. I don't want to belabor the point. I know you have a lot of business tonight, and I want to leave time for any questions that you have. So, again, I'm just here to say thank you for the opportunity, thank you for your membership in the league, and I'm happy to answer any questions about our services or issues that we are working on.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. You stated something about the statute of limitation, 10 years?
Yes.
If that ran out, if they didn't meet their requirement, what would be the consequence?
The consequence of a 10-year statute?
I mean, if the 10-year, they didn't meet their qualification, filling out, fulfilling the 10-year statute?
Any, the way I understand the ruling, from the time that any developer asks for repayment of any impact fees that they feel were invalidated by the Supreme Court decision, they could go back 10 years and ask for that repayment from the municipality. So, you know, it depends from city to city and town to town what the extent of that impact would be, but, I mean, it's safe to say that it's millions of dollars, and in some cases, of fast-growing towns could be tens of millions of dollars if every developer were to come and ask for that repayment. Again, I do think it's, my understanding is that it requires proactive action on the part of the developer. They have to come and ask for it. There's no duty for you to find somebody who has paid those fees and repay them, but as it stands now, and again, the Supreme Court has accepted the appeal, so we're hopeful that either legislatively or from the courts, we can reach a different statute of limitations. But as it stands now, it does, it would go back 10 years, the way it currently says.
Redistribution?
Yeah, there's a sales tax reallocation bill, Senate Bill 126. It's passed the Senate. It was not included in the Senate budget. It's up for consideration by the House now. We have a group, one of our affiliate groups that we work with, the resort towns and convention cities that are coming for a breakfast tomorrow, and they're going to be working on this bill. So far, the House has not scheduled any hearing of that bill. I was looking at the estimates provided by Fiscal Research. I believe New Bern's, their projected impact was around a $17,000 loss annually. We always, as a League of Municipalities, push for solutions that can benefit all of our municipalities. We have a bill filed that we're looking to push, House Bill 900, which would provide municipalities with local options if they want to put a referendum before their citizens of ways to raise revenue. There's three different revenue-raising methods in that bill. Again, that's been filed in the House, but has not been passed yet. So, at this point, we're trying to push something that will kind of float all boats, rather than bills that end up moving some money from one area to another and take from some counties and benefit others. And so, Senate Bill 126 has not been heard in the House yet, nothing scheduled in that regard.
Mayor, most of the impacts with regards to the sales tax redistribution, reallocation is generally, the significant impacts are hailing from those individuals like Dare County, even Carteret County, probably Buncombe County, I think some of those.
This particular bill, and I'm sure you really don't want me to get into the weeds of what it is, but there are adjustment factors that are currently in law, and so your level of impact depends on what current adjustment factor is written in the statute, and then what your new adjustment factor would be, based on your economic development tier. So again, it depends somewhat on what your statutory adjustment factor is currently, but the manager's right, it's, Dare has the highest one, Carteret is very significant, Brunswick to some extent, Orange, Durham, and then on the other hand, you have counties like Columbus that have, are getting 81 cents on the dollar now, so would benefit relatively significantly. But it does tend to be tourist area and urban areas that are hit the most by reallocation proposals. I don't know if Dorrin County's there. You have something?
Yes, sir. You mentioned earlier about the insurance, the group health insurance.
Yeah.
We're self-insured, and you were saying, you spoke with Mr. Stevens and earlier, early on about that.
Well, I just happened to get here early because I wasn't sure how the weather was gonna, whether it was going to affect my drive down, so yeah.
So, it's nothing that your organization could help us to get a better rate than what we're getting now, with us being self-insured, from what I've been hearing, that that's the route for us to take?
Well, I, I'm sure the manager would know better than I would how rates compare. You know, a lot of our municipalities go out to bid from time to time, and we're always available to provide a quote or a bid. As I said, it's not uncommon for our larger municipalities to be self-insured. That is not uncommon at all for municipality of your size. I would have to get more information, I'd be happy to, in terms of the municipalities that currently take advantage of our health insurance options and what, you know, the size might be. But if you were interested in getting a quote or talking more about our health insurance services, I'm sure somebody from our Risk Management Services Department would be happy to.
I would be curious to see what it is.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, Mr. Stevens, checking that out.
We can definitely look at it, but I'm going to go ahead and tell you, Mr. Kenzie, that we have, we have shopped this out on multiple occasions and included the league, and virtually every single time, we're better suited to be where we are. If you want us to utilize, staff time to do it again, we can do it, but I can tell you that, from our perspective, that has been the case virtually every time. And, and I was talking with Mr. Nida as, as we were coming in, and I asked him, I said, you know, do you have a lot of large municipalities that, that participate in it? And generally speaking, there, it's usually not the case. Most of the ones who participate in the program that you're going to see are ones that are smaller communities that may have anywhere from one to 25 or 50 staff members, because it behooves their interest to be in a larger pool to help drive down the cost of what their health insurance is versus us who have 459 employees if the budget gets approved tonight, to have our own self-insured insurance to do so.
Well, we can just stay where we are. I was just curious.
But we do, every single time that we, we actually go out and look at our pricing for health insurance, we always go and try to check that option.
Yeah, one, one thing I always like to point out is that, you know, we, like I said, we have 553 municipalities in North Carolina. About 80% of them have 5,000 people or less, and again, it's a, you know, one, five, 10 employees. And so, we are, even though our urban centers are growing, we are still a state of small towns in a lot of ways, and we try to offer services to all of those small towns in addition to the larger municipalities like New Bern and, and on up to our larger cities.
Thank you.
Couple of things I'll mention, of course, another Alderman might have some things in mind. Very interested in interstate program, Interstate 42, Highway 70. Completion of four-lane in from our, our 17 up to the proposed interstate. I don't remember if it was any one or what, the interstate to Norfolk. All that, you know, in the eastern area of our state is a concern, four-lane roads so we can get more industry down here. Another thing, our sister cities, Greenville and Kentston, we really want to partner with them on the event issues associated with whatever's happening upstream in Raleigh as far as the river basin goes and mitigation. I think in the original flood, the dam up in Raleigh, I think they actually were, were in the 60s considering a second dam somewhere around Goldensboro with, if it were in place, but probably, if the event is in Greenville or Lumberton or wherever, we could better work that out, but that's within your realm of what you do. Nothing down this way is reentry program. All the counties and the cities around here are very interested in doing our part, partner with workforce development, community colleges to, to help folks get back into reentry. So, those are some of our main issues, and probably very interesting, the New Bern long talk structures would be, would be the Interstate 42 and the potential economic impact of being able to tie into 95 and 40 and other interstates.
That, Dave, board?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. You talked about a number, a number of areas here in your, in your brief sheet, but just from your perspective from North Carolina League of Municipalities, what do you see is the biggest challenge facing towns across North Carolina?
That's a good question. You know, I don't want to appeal like I'm ducking the question. It does, I mean, it does vary, of course, from, from city to city and geography to geography. I do think, again, this may be me talking because I get so involved in our financial issues, you know, it does concern me that locally-controlled revenue options have been slowly disappearing, sometimes as a result of General Assembly actions, sometimes it's just structural in the way things are set up. You know, the property tax is really one of the, is basically the only locally-controlled source of revenue in, among North Carolina's municipalities, and that's common among all 553 municipalities. We, me personally and as a league, would love to see more flexibility at the local level to help you raise the revenue to best provide the services to your citizens as you need to provide, and so that it doesn't always come down to raising the property tax. We think low property taxes are one of the reasons we're growing and why people are moving to North Carolina. And again, this may just be me, somebody talking is too, too far in the weeds on some of these financial issues, but I would like to see more revenue flexibility at the local level, and so there's not so much pressure on the property tax statewide.
And what is your level of influence with the General Assembly addressing some of those concerns?
Well, I think I relate, I, I've been at the league, as I said, for almost nine years. It was not always a, a very positive environment towards cities. I think there were some legislators who had the feeling that cities were regularly overstepping their boundaries and wanted to, there was a feeling, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, that they were trying to frame in what they saw as abuses on the part of municipalities. We hired a new Governmental Affairs Director two years ago, Rose Von Williams, who has tremendous relationships throughout the building, was a liaison for the Department of Insurance for a long time. We did some reorganization internally. Instead of filling a vacant lobbyist position, we have contracted with Brubaker and Associates. Harold Brubaker used to be Speaker of the House in the North Carolina General Assembly, and so they're working on our behalf now. And I believe there's an annual ranking of lobbyists that can, comes out, and Speaker Brubaker was either ranked the most influential lobbyist or the second most influential lobbyist. I have to go back and check. I really feel good about our advocacy team. I think our relationships and our ability to influence things that are happening down there are getting better every year and have improved every year since I've been at the League of Municipalities. But, you know, there's elections every two years and there's turnover, and so there are people that have a really strong understanding of the state and county and city relationship, and others that have less experience with that, and so we just continue to work to build those relationships. So I think our influence is improving, but there's a lot of competing needs at the state level, and there's a lot of different groups representing people's interests, and so we're doing our best and are down there, down there every day working.
Well, it's obvious to, I think, a lot of us that one size does not fit all.
Yeah.
And that you have areas of the state that have greater influence and control of the General Assembly based on population centers, so that would be a concern for me, but nonetheless, they all work for us, just like I work for my constituents, so.
Yeah, and we have grassroots staff on hand, and that is something that, you know, something that we made a significant effort on over the past several years, is to help foster more involvement at the local level as much, I don't think we always did as great a job of helping our member municipalities develop those relationships with their legislators and reach out to their legislators, because they see our lobbyists every day in the building. But it means a lot to hear from the mayor and hear from the Alderman and the council members back home as well. And so, anything that we can do to facilitate that, I know many of you do that on your own and don't necessarily need us from Raleigh telling you how to do that, but anything we can do to facilitate those communications, or we've organized lobby days where councils or staff have come up to Raleigh, we've helped them set up meetings at the General Assembly, anything that we can do to help with your local influence back home, that's why we're here as a membership organization, and we'd be happy to do that.
Well, having been up there last year with several, my colleagues on the board, town hall day, my recommend, one recommendation I would make to you is to regionalize that town hall so that you don't have a cast of thousands that's trying to fit into a room where the speaker or other members of the assembly are trying to address issues that don't apply to everyone. So I think that's one thing you could probably do, and do it on quarterly basis or if you want to divvy it up, and I think that's important.
No, thank you very much for that suggestion. I'll take that back.
I've got several points that I think we could use some help on. Number one, in terms of facilitating contact, contacts and visits with our state representatives, I think it would be hugely helpful if you would take a more active role in terms of fostering meetings with local elected officials and those individuals. It's not just a fact of they're tired of seeing the lobbyists, it's the fact that we vote, and so do our constituents. And typically, elected officials pay more attention to people who vote, and large numbers of people who vote, and they tend to listen more. I would like to echo what the mayor and Alderman Blackiston said as well, going back to infrastructure and economic development. I think DOT has been very focused on relieving congestion with their more recent road projects, and that is, you know, coming from Washington DC, that's certainly absolutely critical. But for the east and west portions of the state, the issue is not congestion, the issue is, is economic development, and we can't do that without a 2017 road system. So, number two, I think New Bern, eastern North Carolina specifically needs help there in terms of 42 and 81. And to continue with what you were talking about in terms of the property tax base, the best way to raise revenue is to raise the business presence, because the taxes coming out of businesses are much higher and much more robust than they are for individual homeowners. So the more interstates that we get here, the more businesses that we attract here, the more tax base the municipalities will have to provide services to the citizens. So that's one of those issues that has awful long legs that needs to be specifically addressed. And so, I think when we talk about property taxes, I think it needs to be hand in glove with how do we attract more business to eastern North Carolina, and that's what we specifically need. My, my question for you is, are you working with the North Carolina Military Affairs Commission? That is a new department, a new body that has been stood up and has become much, much more robust over the last couple of years, and one of its goals is attracting defense industry.
Yeah.
Into eastern North Carolina, North Carolina's whole, but obviously we're in eastern North Carolina. So what contacts do you have with them, and if you don't, can you make that more robust yourself?
Yeah, I, I mentioned one of our affiliate groups earlier. We do, you know, one of the things that we do as a staff is sort of coordinate the activities of these affiliate groups, kind of sort of subsets of our members that exist around the states, and one that just formed within the last couple of years, I'll, I'll blank on the official name of it, but it's a, it's a Military Cities Affiliate, and so it's Fayetteville, it's Goldensboro, it's Havelock. I don't know for sure whether New Bern is a part of it or not, but I'm sure they would be happy to have you if they are.
But that's not what I'm referring to, though.
No, I know. I, I say that, yes, I understand, I'm sorry, thank you. I say that in that I think that the Military Cities Group is leading our contacts with the Military Affairs Commission, because I do know that they were made a cabinet-level department just within the last two or three years, the Affairs Commission. And so, we have been working with them through our affiliate with the Military Cities. But yes, I think you're right, it's probably something that we can continue to develop our contacts there. I believe it's Secretary Hall now.
If it is Secretary Hall, I think it could be more direct. Okay, from the perspective of if, if New Bern is going to contribute money to the League of Municipalities, since we're in the county with a military base.
Yeah.
I think it would be more helpful if there were direct contact between you and the NC Mac.
Sure.
Also, additional funding, like is it 12 million a year that the state's been spending on military?
Not that much.
And?
Closer to two.
Is it two?
So closer to two now, the, it's, that needs to be ramped up if we are going to attract more defense industry.
Trying to get lift stations and things like that.
Yeah.
Pretty expensive. And of course, this Interstate 42, the whole idea of the aviation corridor between Seymour Johnson and Goldensboro, which are eight four. between Seymour Johnson and Goldsboro, which are eight-point transport, whatever happens with that in Kansas. There's a tremendous opportunity for aviation along this proposed interstate. So anyway, Alderman Odom?
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming this evening and providing us with this information. A lot of it is new information that I haven't seen some of the numbers before. So maybe an annual brief or an update would be advantageous for us to stay abreast of the results of our investment. But just one comment that I'll make, don't have any questions. I think you've addressed all those for us tonight, but just one comment on the impact fees. I just want to implore you to, and I'm sure you've seen some of the numbers of what financial impact this would be for municipalities and cities around the state. To me, there are a lot of areas of focus that need attention throughout the state, but this is one that would essentially bankrupt a lot of those municipalities. I think you mentioned 553 and 540 are members. I don't know how many are members that would essentially fall bankrupt, but I know there's quite a few based on the numbers we've seen. So I would definitely encourage you to please continue to push that. That, to me, is number one priority in this particular session for sure because that is really the only protection that we have is some legislative action. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, because we're all down here trying to figure out if you can't. You know, the argument is that the, some folks that don't like impact fees, like developers, are like you're picking on new construction. Well, existing homes don't deplete 300 gallons of sewer a day from a sewer treatment plant when you've got a 6 million gallon capacity and you're at 4 million. So, you know, and the only other way to do that, I would assume, Mr. Stevens, is operational rate increases. And so then you have some folks that are elderly that are paying for a plant that might not go online for 20 years by, you know, capital reserve quasi through operational rate structure.
Technically, they'd be paying for two plants because they would be paying for the plant that they've already incorporated into the rate, and then they'd be paying for another plant.
So I'm not quite sure what we've been doing wrong. We've been trying to get capital reserves to, for future, you know, well, we have to expand the plant. Has anybody else got anything? And I really appreciate what you're doing. And I think from what I observe, the Metro Mayor's seem to be working together in a concerted effort with the League of Municipalities because sometimes the larger cities do have issues that don't affect the smaller cities. And so I think that works great, Mr. Stevens. You look like you want to add to that.
No, I was actually going to wait till you finished, and then I was going to just add on to what you said. I wanted to follow up. Military Host Cities Coalition is the name of the affiliate group, and Mayor Phillips from Jacksonville is president of that group. So if you want to reach out to him, he could probably lead in getting us involved in that particular coalition.
But yeah, I'd be happy to talk to you more. I know anybody on our staff would be happy to talk to you more about ways that we could better engage, more directly engage with the Military Affairs Commission. I mean, you know, I guess if there's an overarching message, it's just the League is just because of cities and towns like you. We're a membership organization, so please feel free to reach out to us at any time with any questions or concerns. Mr. Stevens knows how to get ahold of me or anybody else on our staff. So I really do appreciate the opportunity to be here and to afford to continue and to work with you.
Is there a way to better institutionalize bringing our concerns to you? Is it working well? Can it be tweaked to work better?
We?
From your perspective?
It's sort of funny you ask that. We're in the process of, we just hired a new director of business and membership development, who has, she has a lot of responsibilities. One of the things she's doing is looking at our territories. Believe it, you may or may not know it, you have a member service rep that is assigned to New Bern in this territory. But I think we're going to do a better and more proactive job of, just like Alderman Odom mentioned, maybe an annual briefing or some kind of regular outreach so you have a better idea of what's going on at the League and we have a better idea of what's going on locally. Like I said, we have policy committees that deal with legislative and regulatory issues, a board of directors that any League member is welcome to apply to. I'll think more about, you know, ways to institutionalize that rather than it just being an ad hoc communication. Those are some of the opportunities we have now. But I'll think more on that. If you have any ideas, please share them because we're always open to any feedback from our members.
Okay, well, we thank you so much for coming up.
No, thank you very much for the opportunity. I appreciate the time.
At this time, we're going to go to item number five. Consider adopting a resolution approving the sale of 615 Miller Street.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the Board. The Board adopted a resolution on April 11, 2017 to initiate the upset bid process for 615 Miller Street after receiving an offer from Jesse Bryant in the amount of $262.50. The property is a small 10-foot by 100-foot vacant lot that's jointly owned by the county and the city after being acquired in 1981 due to tax foreclosure. The offer was advertised by state statute requirement. No additional bids were received. If the sale of the property is approved, the city would receive $236.05. From the proceeds, the county would receive $26.45. Ms. Blanco, City Clerk, has attached a map along with the purchase, offer to purchase and breakdown of the projected proceeds. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving the sale of 615 Miller Street.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, seconded by Alderman Mitchell. Is there further discussion? See, and now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number six, consider adopting a resolution approving the sale of 617 Miller Street.
Mr. Stevens? Thank you, Mayor. This is the Board. Similarly to the last one, April 11 was the adopted resolution to initiate the process for 617 adjacent to the previous one at 615. Jesse Bryant offered $5,500 for the purchase of the property. It contains a residential structure that is in significant need of repair. The property was acquired in December of 2016 due to tax foreclosure. It's owned jointly by the city and the county. It has a tax value of $21,570. The offer from Mr. Bryant was advertised. No additional bids were received. If the sale of the property is approved, the city will receive $2,097.95. The county would receive $3,402.05 from the proceeds. Once again, the map is included along with the offer to purchase. We'll answer any questions you have.
Again, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving the sale of 617 Miller Street.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, seconded by Alderman Odom. Is there further discussion? See, and now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number seven, consider adopting a resolution approving installment purchase financing. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor. The adopted budget for fiscal years 16, 17 included various capital and other various capital and equipment purchases. July 12, 2016, the Board adopted a resolution and declaration of an official intent to reimburse pursuant to IRS regulations with respect to financing of those items. Requests for proposals were sent to 17 different banks. We had five responses. Upon reviewing the responses, Director of Finance, Mr. Savatelli, is recommending a loan to be secured with First Citizens Bank for a period of 59 months at an interest rate of 1.9%. He has a memo that's included in your packet along with the summary of the bids. And I think what you're seeing here is with those rates that we're getting is the significance of having a very stable fund balance and the efforts of staff to maintain what our good credits are. So I'd like to say thanks to them, and we'll answer any questions you may have.
Board, any questions?
Mayor, if not, I'd like to make a motion we adopt a resolution approving installment purchase financing for FY 17 capital purchases.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Odom, seconded by Alderman Mitchell. Is there further discussion? See, and now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number eight, consider adopting an ordinance amending the schedule of fees and charges. Mr. Stevens?
I'm sorry?
I'd like to make a amendment if possible.
Yes, sir.
My amendment is to allow Edmund Bogus to be able to speak, give his information on what he has, so we can get all this cleared off, so we can go ahead and do what we need to do.
And that is a motion. Do not hear seconds in that motion.
It sounded like this kid.
I beg pardon?
It sounded like this kid.
Without a motion seconded and approved by the Board, that would not be allowed to stand. Okay, on with item number eight, consider adopting an ordinance amending the schedule of fees and charges. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the Board. Each year, as part of the budget process, staff reviews the city's fees for needed updates. The projected revenues for FY 17 and 18 and the recommended budgets are based upon those updated fees. What you have before you is, and also attached as part of the ordinance, is amendment to the schedule of fees and charges to incorporate the needed updates you have before you. And it was including in your agenda packet a redlined version of the current fee schedule denoting the changes. The changes would be struck through. The red letters represent what the new charge would be. Upon approval of the Board, the new fees will become effective with the new budget July 1, 2017. And I'm happy to discuss any of those changes in fees with you right now, as well as Mr. Savatelli.
Question?
Yes, sir, Mr. White. Go ahead.
Alderman Taylor, may I?
Okay, Alderman Taylor.
On the police, number seven, off-duty fee. Why did it go up from two hours to three hours?
What we did, staff looked at the extra duty comparison with regards to what some of our other comparable cities charge. So what we were running into is because we had a two-hour minimum, we were having a very difficult time of finding staff who were willing to come in just for two hours because essentially they've got to give up their off-time or an off-day or a weekend day to them to come in and work those two hours. So what they wanted to do was up what the minimum hour is. And so just to give you an idea, the comparable cities that we looked at, you have the Jacksonville Police Department, their hourly rate is $25. $35 for Black Friday, the minimum is three hours. Greenville's Police Department, their hourly rate is 37.75 is the basic rate. They have some other ones based on premiums for holidays. Their minimum hours is four. Wilmington, their minimum hours is four, hourly rate's $36 plus a $25 flat fee for the use of the city vehicle. Kinston, $25 an hour, minimum three hours. Morehead City, $30. They have no minimum. Craven County Sheriff's Department's $25 an hour with a four-hour minimum. So as you can see, ours was two. The only one that was lower than us was, that would have been Morehead City's Police Department. The rest of them are three hours or four hours. So we're just trying to bring ourselves into.
I mean, that's a good reason. The reason why I'm saying it is because recently we did utilize the police, and they said a minimum of two hours. We wound up paying three hours because they said they had to get there and talk about plans. Where it's looking now, if it go up to three hours, you're going to wind up paying four hours. So it's still, if you put it to three, they're going to wind up paying four anyway. Because we paid, we had a minimum of two hours, and we had to wind up paying three hours. I didn't understand it, so I asked them. They said, well, they got to talk over the plans for hours. So we had to wind up paying three hours. We don't mind paying, whether you don't move it from two to three. Now, the person that rents the reserve of the police is going to wind up paying from three hours, can wind up paying four hours.
Ax for the only charge of what we're working.
Now, I hear that, chief, but my invoice said two hours, and I said, okay, we only use them two hours. But I was told that they had to sit, they had to come in, get a plan of attack, and we had to pay for that plan of attack. So I paid three hours, $81 per officer.
Yes, they worked three hours. Yes, sir.
I, okay, I don't buy that, but they, what was the extra hour? Was it the plan of attack or was they actually working? Because the parade was from 12 to two.
Yeah, actually, if you recall, we had to set up barricades. We had to get everything.
I set barricades up with my hands. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, sir.
Still, my major problem is that I'm looking and I'm seeing an increase in cemeteries, which is $100 each. Look, everything, they're elevating just about $100, $150. I don't see no real purpose of elevating or even charging that. It seems as if whatever somebody else or some other cities are doing, that we want to be on the same basis as those other cities. We want to be as much better than those other cities. But doesn't necessarily mean we have to have the same fee standards. We didn't have them, and some of those cities are much better off than we are financially and growth. And we are still trying to grow, and we're in a struggle stage. We're doing the very best we can, but when you start to just sitting down and just coming up with it, I mean, I don't know who's sitting on the committee or the group that normally did this or how it went about. That gives me a little bit more to talk about. If I knew, then I probably wouldn't be saying anything. I think there's some things happening that we don't know anything about and we need to know. I see that increases, certain people are allowed to have more as expenditure when you really don't need it. Why is it, I know what we got away from, but why is it the money is not considered in one pot and who ever need what they need at that point in time, being to get what they can with approval out of that pot? I mean, everybody shouldn't have a certain amount to be able to go to a limit where taxpayers don't really, most of them don't know, but they think we're down here doing anything. That's what they think, but we're not. And I don't have all that authority, because you know, if I had authority, I guess we would be probably better off. You know, I don't understand it, and I don't approve, don't approve of the parade increase, vegetable cemetery. And then I see another area here where the people out of town that comes in, and we were $20, $30 over them, now we're just $10 over them. I don't, I don't understand that. I mean, if we're going to work together, then work together, but the people in the city are not supposed to go through all the suffering. They don't need to suffer. I probably said enough from here, but if you've got anything you want to add to that, I'd be more than glad to put a hammer to it.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, my thoughts on the cemetery is you've got a limited amount of inventory. When that inventory is depleted, so is your revenue. And the maintenance for the cemetery is going to have to come from somewhere. And I think it was last year, Alderman Blackiston made a motion to add some funding to help with the maintenance of the cemetery. So essentially, you're either going to charge, it kind of goes back to the impact fee conversation we just had, either you're going to charge the user, in this situation, the person purchasing the grave plot, or either the citizens and taxpayers are going to have to pay for that residual maintenance. And I see that there's some cemeteries that's been crossed off the list. I'm assuming we don't have any inventory there anymore. So eventually, when these other cemeteries sell out, the grass is still going to have to be cut, the maintenance is still going to continue, and there's not going to be revenue to help pay for that. So I'm asking the staff, I guess, was that the logic and the thought process behind raising the cemetery fees?
I would say that some of that probably is a thought process. I think you also have to recognize that the cost for staff to perform the work every year continues to go up. We have vehicles we have to buy, we have equipment we have to dig the graves with, we have staff we have to employ, the health insurance costs go up. All of that stuff is contributory, and at some point or another, keeping the rates the same obviously creates a negative impact on what your revenue stream is to handle an increasing expenditure cost. So, and I will be quite frank here. We have Thurmond based a significant amount of his recommendations on cities such as Burlington, Garner, Monroe, Clayton, Clinton, Jacksonville, Greenville, Vanceboro, Greenleaf Cemetery, which is a private one locally. And I know everything can't be, you know, specifically based on what other municipalities are doing to Mr. White's comment, but our rates are pretty low, honestly, in comparison with some of those. You know, just as a single plot in New Bern Memorial. You know, just as a, a single plot in New Bern Memorial for a resident in Clayton, that's a thousand dollars. In Clinton, it's six hundred dollars. In Jacksonville, it's a thousand dollars. Greenville's five fifty, Vanceboro's six fifty. We're proposing, we were at five hundred, we're proposing a one-hundred-dollar increase to six hundred. So that puts us kind of in line with where everybody else is. And I've said it before and I'll say it again, we, you know, it's great that we have low rates. It's great that we are continuing to lower our utility rates, but we can't be the lowest of everything and expect continued disturbances that we have because the expenditure end of it is gonna continue to go up. The cost to do business goes up from year to year.
And do you have a, a single grave plot cost at Greenleaf?
Um...
Which is local?
I, I don't have the specific to what the, the, the single plot is as far as the cost. But I will tell you, we charged for a cemetery, just to put it in perspective, opening and closing during the week for an adult resident in New Bern is four hundred dollars. We're proposing it to go to five hundred. Greenleaf charges eight hundred and twenty-five dollars for an opening and closing. For the weekends, it's nine seventy-five. We charge four seventy-five plus one hundred dollars for that. But you may know what that single grave cost is.
I just wanted to speak to Alderman, Alderman's, excuse me, question. We tried to get the information from Greenleaf as far as their fees and charges, but they didn't want to release it. They did give us the opening, closing information, or that's all we could get.
Thank you.
On the white, do you have a question?
I got one thing to say and I'll, I'll leave it at that. I heard the city manager says, there's a few comments on what I said, but the one thing I do know, you can't follow everybody. And those cities financially should be better off. Some of them are better off than we are. We have always been a city that normally, I thought years ago, normally tried to help and continue its growth. But we started making it harder for some people who, who have trouble trying to bury their own. I think that's a problem. So I'm gonna leave it like this. My mind is already made up anyhow, so nobody can change that.
I'd like to make a comment here. As the city manager said, the cost of upkeep of any of these properties does continue to go up. That's a different version of the cost of living. It is the cost of operating. If we are, if we as a city are going to provide a final resting place, I believe we also have an obligation to keep those properties up and maintained and respectful to the individuals who have been buried in them and the families of those loved ones. So if this is necessary in order to maintain these properties in, in good, respectful condition, then I will support it.
Mr. Stevens, just a, just a side question here. Some of the, some of the fee changes or the fee structures that we have, are they reflective of increases for services that are occurring within the community by service providers? In other words, funeral home, I mean, we don't base what we do on that, but certainly that might be a factor in terms of, I know we've had folks that have gone into Cedar Grove and there's been some issues there relative to what they had to move or relocate or adjust and that sort of thing. I just wonder where contractors are involved.
Obviously, we, we do use contractual labor to do some opening and closings. And anytime, anytime you're in Cedar Grove Cemetery, the level of difficulty is very significant.
Well, I hope not to go to Cedar Grove anytime soon.
Yeah, obviously, it's a historical cemetery. And, and the same, same thing applies actually, probably, I would say with Greenleaf Cemetery too and some of the others just because of, of, you know, the age of some of the grave sites and so forth and so on. But Cedar Grove is definitely probably the most significant. But, but ultimately, yes, some contractual labor is used for this opening and closing. And that's kind of my point, is that when you have a contractual labor arrangement and their price goes up from year to year to do the labor that needs to be done based on the bidding, then obviously that's cost that we're incurring, an additional expense we're incurring and we're trying to, you know, balance out the revenue with that expense.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this ordinance and amend the schedule of fees and changes, charges.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Mitchell, signed by Alderman Odom. Is there further discussion? CNN, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
No.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
No.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman White?
No.
Alderman Oden?
Yes.
Step item number nine, consider adopting the budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty seventeen, eighteen, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Ford. As you recall, the budget was presented to you on the twenty-fifth of April, two thousand seventeen. We subsequently had two budget work sessions on May the second and third with respect to the recommended budget for fiscal year seventeen and eighteen. At that time, the department heads came and presented in detail each budget as well as public comment periods during that time period. And another opportunity for public comment was held when we had our public hearing at the May ninth regular session of the board. This is the final budget as the board discussed and directed staff to bring to you. Of note, I will say that the, the major change of the budget that was recommended by the board was to take out the one-point-five million dollars in stormwater. We did that. However, at that meeting, if you recall, the mayor said that he would get with staff. So Mr. Savatelli and myself and the mayor contacted the local government commission. They did give us a, a written email response approving us to do that financing through funds in the general fund, which is what this board discussed at the board retreat. And so while it's not included in this budget, we're probably gonna be setting it, setting it up in a project fund anyways. So that will be coming to you post-adoption of this budget. So I wanted to make sure and just pass that along. So it doesn't relate to this specific budget, but we are moving forward with the one-point-five million dollars as approved by the board during the budget retreat and will be bringing that to you at a subsequent meeting.
Mr. Stevens, could you?
Maybe I, maybe I missed that. So the, the LGC did approve us to use general fund money to pay one-point-five million worth of stormwater projects. Since we've taken it out of the budget now, you're saying that in order to put it back, we would do a budget amendment?
If, if, well, if you recall, when we had it set up in the budget, it was set up in the budget in the stormwater fund. The board directed us to take out of the stormwater fund because that was gonna require a subsequent year-after increase in what the rate was gonna be because we were gonna finance it. So we were gonna do some investigation. The mayor and I and Mr. Savatelli sat down, spoke with the LGC. They approved us to utilize general fund money for the stormwater. Since it was a smaller amount and we were able to justify that to them, they were gonna allow us to do so. So what we're saying is, is we're going to bring that back to the board and establish a project fund much like we did with the AMI project, so forth and so on. And we will do our financing and everything through the project fund with an offsetting revenue. So it will be basically its own fund. They will have an offsetting revenue and an expenditure.
And part of this movement, as I recall, the whole idea of the manager's budget, proposed budget would have been a stormwater raid increase to pay the, the freight on capital improvement. There's no way you'd have done it without a stormwater raid increase.
That would be correct.
And that was something that we as a board would have to discuss.
So, so, Mr. Savatelli, for, for the public's clarification and make sure that everybody understands, because I know that there was a lot of conversation recently about budget amendments. And my opinion of a budget amendment is there's more transparency and visibility to a budget amendment because we bring it up before the board in a public meeting, we discuss it, we take a couple of different action items on it versus it being hidden, if you will, inside of a budget. So can you explain, is there a reason for us to handle it the way that Mr. Stevens just relayed? Or should we delay accepting this budget tonight and put it in this budget?
Excuse me, the best thing to do would be to do it the way Mr. Stevens relayed because this way we actually will have a separate project fund established that will allow a sole, the sole focus of that fund will be on the stormwater project. A lot of times, projects like these span over multiple fiscal years. This will allow us to span those years with the capital project fund. Whereas if we put it in our operating budget, in the general fund operating budget, we will have to worry about carryover and that sort of thing into possibly a subsequent fiscal year.
Okay, so staff's recommendation is that we would move forward with approving the budget tonight. So you can go ahead and get your numbers inputted in the system. There's, there's no reason to delay approving the budget tonight for this particular project and you would bring this back and forth to the later day.
That is correct, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions, Mike Quarr, I guess, I'll keep ballrooming. We talked about, Alderman, Odom talked about the nine-one-one situation. That the last time we met, and, and as I see it now, I'm looking at the, the total price all the way up to fiscal years seventeen, eighteen. And that's four thousand, almost five thousand dollars difference compared to fifteen, sixteen, when that's one hundred and five thousand. So, so what's the, our, what's the major changes in, in the nine-one-one since we're not doing the other thing?
Are you talking about the E-nine-one-one fund, sir?
Yeah, emergency, emergency nine-one-one support. We have the book is one point nine.
It's what, what page?
Page one-twenty-nine.
Thank you, sir.
I'm just looking at, they jumped and then Alderman White, that's the result of changes in salary increases and whatnot for the two individuals that are paid from the, from this organization.
I'm sorry, I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Going back over the, the second, the, the budget amendment for the stormwater fees, if we do not include it in the current budget and it comes back before the vote before the board, that will require a second vote, correct?
It won't require a vote on the budget. The budget would be adopted as it's presented. It doesn't have that in there. This is a completely separate line item or fund that would be set up for the stormwater. So it would be a separate vote, yes, ma'am?
This would be in line with the vote that we did for the two thousand seventeen construction projects for the water, water and sewer funds, where we did the construction projects for anything under the, under the roads that we're, we're resurfacing. So it'd be very similar in nature to that.
Okay, how long would it take to put the one-point-five stormwater back into this budget? Can it be done by next Alderman speaking?
Yes, ma'am, we can have it, we can have it in for the next Alderman meeting.
The, the question to your question is what, what is the duration of time of implementing the capital improvements? What is your timeline on that?
No, it, it was just how long it was to put it back in.
I know that, but I'm, I'm asking, how long would it take with permitting and everything else to, what is your estimated range of?
The issues are, and the reason why we're looking to set this up in a project fund is because as of right now, our projects are based on estimates of the work to be completed, okay? What we don't know is, is we have not gone in and located all the utilities. We may have utility impacts that would be necessary for us to do those stormwater changes. We may have some roadway impacts or some curbing or whatever. I mean, we've, we've got some pretty close estimates, but what we don't know is the things that are unforeseen, okay? When we start tearing out that pipe and replacing it, it's old terracotta pipe, it may be more than what we need. We may have to put in a couple of other things. We really need to kind of get some very detailed estimates. So in, in doing so, when we set up a project fund, it allows you to capture all of the expenses necessary in that particular project fund during that particular time. And you know what you're financing, planning to finance at that point is a one-point-five million dollars. So you're gonna have that work associated with the expenses. Once you close out what that financing arrangement is, then at that point, it would transfer over into the general fund. Otherwise, what we have to do is, is we're gonna have to set up a one-point-five million dollar expenditure in the general fund, which is very easy. I mean, we'll just make one line item and set one-point-five million dollars. And then in the revenue side, you're gonna have one-point-five million dollars of proceeds from debt installments of, or net proceeds from, from debt. So essentially, that's the loan that we're gonna get. So it shows the revenue. It basically nets zero. But ultimately, in, in the, in the interest of getting the project set up, it allows us to capture all the costs associated with that project. Then we go get the financing and close out the financing and then we roll that in. And if the first payment happens in this budget year, and so be it. It may not be until next budget year when we actually will see that payment roll into the general fund.
That's why I'm asking, is that you might actually spread this into fiscal years. And, you know, if you're worried about how you're gonna fund it, you know, if this not will probably happen with what you just went through in six months.
And some, some of the issues too, and let me, let me give you a, for instance, and don't quote, don't quote me on this public, but I think some of the areas we've looked at is potentially some of the drainage improvements in the two-hundred and three-hundred blocks of Middle Street. Well, I'm pretty sure that this board would not want me to go tearing up Middle Street to fix some stormwater improvements until at least after October or November or December probably because we got Christmas going along that street. So it's very timely as far as when some of this work gets done. And so that's the reason why when you establish a project fund, you can roll over fiscal years and do these, these projects as you come to them, whether it may be who of your interest to do it at a certain time versus another.
Do, do we have any, we don't typically put a project in the budget, correct? So the water plant expansion, there's not a project that's shown in the budget, right?
That's correct.
They're done through project funds.
They're done through project funds.
And if Alderman Mitchell, if it will ease your concerns, I can have a project fund established at any time so we can actually bring that back before you, either at the next meeting or the, or the meeting after that will, that will establish the fund.
My concern is that we keep voting and revoting and postponing voting, things that have already, already been decided and time is a resource.
Yes, ma'am.
And so my question was, I understand operationally in terms of estimates, timing of the projects, when, what gets done, when and where. Understand that part of it. My, my concern was, did it make more sense to postpone voting on the entire budget for two weeks and have the project fund put in it then and then continue on? Is that a doable, viable way of approaching this?
Let me try to explain it as best I can. My recommendation would be, and I'm not trying to do anything to, to, to pull the wool over or any of that kind of stuff. My recommendation would be for you to approve the budget as it is now because we're gonna set up a project fund for this anyways. The expenditures in the debt service realized by the general fund will probably not happen until the next fiscal year because once you establish this project fund, there's certain items that may go all the way into the spring as far as the stormwater improvements. By the time he closes out, bids it out and closes out the, the financing package, you're probably, more than likely, gonna be into the next fiscal year. I'm just, it may be that it hits in this current fiscal year, but most likely, it will probably go the entire time. So what I'm saying is, is you won't see an expenditure item in the debt payment for the general, sir, general fund until next year.
No matter what.
No matter what.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions about the budget, September eighteen budget?
Mr. Mayor, there's no further discussion. I would like to make, make the motion that we approve the proposed budget for fiscal year seventeen, eighteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Mitchell, signed by Alderman Blackiston. Is there further discussion at this time? If not, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Oden.
Alderman Oden?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number, number ten appointments, Mr. Alderman Blackiston.
None, sir.
Alderman Taylor?
None, sir.
Alderman Mitchell?
None, sir.
Alderman Kenzie?
No, sir.
Alderman White?
I got, I got two candidates getting it down.
I got, I got two candidates, uh, giving it down to one and I have one more to appoint for the other.
You'll be there next meeting, George.
Next meeting.
Alderman Odom?
No, sir.
Okay, this time, let's go to the attorney's report.
Nothing important, ma'am, ma'am.
City manager's report.
I have several items. Um, at the last meeting, uh, I think, uh, Alderman Mitchell, you had asked staff to, uh, look at potential ways to finance the improvements for, uh, airport road, Old Airport Road and Oaks Road. Um, we have provided that information in front of you and I'll go through it real quickly just as a highlight. What you have for Mr. Sabatelli is two different options of terms, ten years and fifteen years. Uh, and you'll see the applicable rates at that point for the projects, uh, depending on what project diet you want, your, your appetite is for. Um, there's loan combinations, uh, you can look at them individually. So the first one is Oaks Road individually, a one point three million dollar project. Old Airport Road at thirty-two feet of width, one point eight million dollars, County Line Road, one point two million dollars. If you combine any of those, he's got those various options there about what the amount is. If you go over to the right, it shows you what the effect on the general fund tax rate, if you were to so choose that as a way in which you would fund those. And then it also shows you the rate impact on a typical one hundred and fifty thousand dollar home as far as their, uh, increase per year. And then the, the very last item is another alternative. We've talked about this several times, you have the motor vehicle license tax that you could potentially see. Right now, ours is five dollars. What you see there is what the new rate would be if you were to so choose that as a revenue generating option, uh, to be able to do that work. And then obviously, there's, there's two other ways, uh, that I can think of. You can do a, a bond referendum, GO bond, where you go out, do a bond referendum, see what the public thinks and then you could go that option. Or you can just flat out pay cash. So you have, the first four line items, uh, uh, columns represent if you were to do, uh, debt interest financing. And the rate that it would be on the tax rate is the fifth column. And then the very last column, the seventh column represents the alternative motor vehicle tax. And then the GO bond's going to be very similar, the rate may be a little bit better, we, we don't know that. But then you throw in the opportunity for the, the public to vote on it and it could get voted down, which means that it wouldn't happen. Um, and then, um, obviously you have the opportunity to pay cash. So those are the four options that we've kind of identified, uh, and we're happy to, to answer any questions you may have or if you want a, a staff to do anything further.
We have questions?
Mr. Stevens, what's the recommendation on, on these mechanisms that you show here?
Well, that's difficult.
Recommendation is that you don't have one, the board has one.
Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's really the board's decision, but, uh, first off, I think you need to figure out whether you want to do the project, uh, or the two projects or the three projects, uh, whatever it is that you want to do. Um, it's, it's difficult, you can, you can look at it from, uh, you know, the tax rate standpoint is distributed amongst, uh, all of our taxpayers. Uh, the motor vehicle tax is for those who have the motor vehicles and utilize the street, so it's more of a user-based fee. So, um, and then the, the, the GO bond throws in the public's opinion and lets them value whether or not the improvements are necessary. And then you actually have, uh, you know, where you can just make the decision to pay, pay cash that we have in the general fund balance. I, I would say that would probably be my least, uh, uh, recommended option for us to use. Um, but happy to, uh, answer any questions you have, that was kind of a tough one that's, that's for me to answer.
Well, in essence, what you've described here is, um, something for, for everyone or one delay in terms of a user, user fee for motor vehicles. But I think this is a decision that we, as you just indicated, the board is elected to make these hard decisions. And I would be in favor of going with one of the recommendations here, in all likelihood, probably the, the vehicle. That's just my, my, my opinion.
Just, I, I'll give you some.
There's some folks that don't want any increases, but we cannot operate this community on that basis and move forward.
I will, I will tell you that, uh, Mr. Sabatelli had done some research regarding, uh, the motor vehicle tax, uh, some time ago. We have that already compiled, uh, with some of our comparable cities. Um, I think was it Concord and a couple of other ones, I think they're at around fifteen to twenty dollars.
That's right.
Uh, there are others that are down five where we are, but obviously, you know, a lot of people utilize that specifically for projects such as this because that's what it's meant for us is, is to do, uh, projects and resurfacing.
I'd like to comment that the, the Oaks Road, Old Airport Road and County Line Road impact the citizens in, in three wards. Those roads in themselves range from bad to awful. Uh, the ability of emergency vehicles to access citizens is severely impacted, um, in case of flood. Um, I know a number of citizens, a number of Aldermen have been talking about doing this for a, a number of years, it certainly is needed. The question is how to pay for it. There are some major pros and cons with, with all of these. I would suggest that we might look at, depending on how the rest of the board feels about this, um, that we might look at over the next couple of weeks, breaking into, um, small groups to, to look at these and, and discuss them, um, with the city manager or with the finance manager over pros and cons. However, is the best way for us to do this and, and figure out if we want to do it and if so, how we want to do it. But I would urge the board to consider this. We have talked about these three roads as long as I've been on the board and as long as I've been on in New Bern. So the question is, do we want to do it bad enough to figure out a way to pay for it? Obviously, from my ward's perspective, I would say yes, um, but there are other wards in the city. So what's the best way to proceed to do it, to, to, to look at the pros and cons of all these options from the, from the perspective of the city?
Okay, Alderman Odom?
Mr. Sabatelli, I don't have my budget book in front of me, but could you tell me what our increase was, um, last fiscal year versus this fiscal year in sales tax revenue? And Alderman Blackiston, I certainly appreciate the comment that if we're going to continue to be a full-service city, we're going to somehow pay for it. My philosophy is you grow your way there and that's the reason I'm asking, Mr. Sabatelli, if you would tell us what that sales tax number is.
Sure. Yes, sir, in six, in FY two thousand sixteen, we brought in, uh, six point two seven million dollars in, uh, sales tax. We're estimating for FY seventeen, uh, six point six million, uh, and for FY eighteen budget, we're at six point seven million.
So we're estimating about a four hundred thousand dollar increase from two years ago in sales tax revenue. And if I'm reading this correct, the, all three roads, the annual, the annual, um, P and I would be four thirty-five, is that correct? Four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars annually?
Yes, sir.
So we've essentially, and my point is, we've essentially raised our sales tax revenue over the last two years and we could have absorbed this particular cost if we wanted to go forward with this project.
Essentially, yes, thank you.
The other item in the next year, so do we have any major debts coming off the city, any major payments coming off?
No, for FY eighteen, I'm going to double check for FY nineteen. Uh, one of the things to keep in mind is that the, that to do something like this, we would want, uh, much similar to what we were talking about with the stormwater, the, the first debt payment would actually not be made until FY nineteen. So essentially, we would not actually necessarily have to raise, uh, make any, uh, rate changes in the, for FY eighteen.
Alderman Taylor?
This is my thought on this and I'll keep it about two minutes. We just received this two minutes ago. We haven't had a chance to digest anything. Also, you're considering raising vehicle taxes, license plate taxes. It said that it's going to affect three wards. But if you do motor vehicle and license, it's going to affect all six wards. So I think my suggestion, we represent the people. We need to have to represent people's input because it's going to affect them tax-wise. So town hall meeting here, a town hall meeting there, before we do anything, raising people taxes because of this. They might still want it, they might not want it, but I'm not saying these areas, Alderman White, Alderman Blackiston, been talking about Oaks Road for a long time. And we, I know they need it, but I think we need to get the, the residents involved before we make a decision on raising taxes on their vehicles or license plates. Some of you all can afford it with no problem, some of them can. So I think before we make a decision, we need to have a few town hall meetings in the communities to see how people feel about these projects and the possibility of raising taxes.
So that's, number one, I agree with you that we've just like, just seen this and we take some time to digest it.
Take time to digest it and also take time to plan some town hall meetings, not just to digest it.
But as I understand it, raising taxes is not the only way to pay for it, so, um, it sounded like what Alderman Odom was suggesting was that there may be a way to fence sales tax revenues, um, in upcoming years to cover this, the cost of this as an option.
Yeah, that, that was where I was getting, but obviously, we, we brought in more money this year. Um, but we also, I don't know what the total impact of the merit increase and salary adjustments would be, but I would imagine that several thou- hundred thousand dollars. Um, so there's going to be some decisions that's going to happen in the future over how we're going to use that incremental sales tax. And we're getting ready to get a very large substantial retail outlet, um, out on the, uh, commercial corridor that's obviously going to impact those numbers. I don't know, usually you guys are very conservative when you're doing your projections, so it's probably didn't include a whole lot of that revenue there. So I think we, we sandbagged, that's a, a safe term to use from some revenue projections, that we would likely have, um, that funding to be able to do these projects in the future without having to either raise taxes or license plate fees. That would be my hope anyway.
Uh, Mr. Stevens, do you have anything else?
Uh, no, sir, I, I, the only thing, oh, I'm sorry, yes, I do have, as far as you're asking me if I have more comments. Um, um, if you're all done talking about that, um, there was, there's some direction that you want to give staff as far as setting a meeting or, or work with, me and the clerk work with scheduling some individual times, I mean.
That's what I would suggest, that there's an awful lot of information here, there is a huge range of options, um, that affect, and by the way, I apologize, um, Alderman Taylor, the road impacts the citizens in three wards. It doesn't mean that the fees don't impact the citizens.
That's what I said, I said it affects, the road affects three wards, but its tax possibility of tax rates affects all six wards.
Right, I would suggest that we set up some meetings for some more in-depth discussions to make sure we all understand the ramifications of this before we go forward. We're certainly not ready for a, a vote on it, but I'm not even sure if we can intelligently discuss it at this stage.
And, and it was not my expectation that we would be making a decision tonight. We were just charged with bringing back information on financing options and that, we were making sure to do that. Uh, I'm happy to work with clerk and the director of finance will set up some meetings, uh, with, with members of the board, uh, to discuss this.
Is, is that the pleasure of the board? Yes, no?
Yes.
Okay, let's go for it.
Um, moving to, uh, my other item, uh, just as a reminder, um, we do have, uh, right now, a special meeting, uh, that is needed for the thirtieth of May, uh, at five P M. There'll be a public hearing to consider many land use ordinance, uh, with regards to additional material needed by cell afford. Um, uh, the board, um, needs to make that motion to hold that meeting, uh, and it would need to be seconded, uh, if, if that's the case.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Odom, segmented by Alderman Mitchell. Let's do a roll call, ma'am, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. Stevens, did you have anything else?
I have one other.
Yes.
Um, an email was circulated to you all, uh, but I wanted to, uh, make sure and make this announcement, uh, for the public as well. Uh, Mr. Harson, our director of Parks and Recreation has decided that he is going to retire after eighteen years approximately of service with the city, thirty-eight years approximately of work in municipal government. And I'd just like to thank him for his service, uh, to the city and to the state of North Carolina, the various locations that he had worked. Uh, and, uh, I'm sure that, uh, most of y'all would probably echo those sentiments, but I just wanted to make sure and, and, and say thank you to him, uh, from me.
Well, I want to echo that and I'll tell you, it's been a real honor and privilege to, to work with you, Mr. Harson. I mean, uh, I know I've picked the phone up many times and probably felt bad about asking you about things and you're just always so accommodating and, and on many instances, things that, uh, folks would, would call me about, the next day they would, they would be fixed, some of them were easy and some more, uh, were kind of difficult. But if you look around at our recreational amenities, our master plan, where we are and where we're going, uh, we, we certainly appreciate it and knowing all along that, um, while you were doing all you were doing for us, you're working on a master's degree. You complete a master's degree in the last two or three years at NC State, so, um, uh, I appreciate all you've done and, um, I wish you, uh, success in the future and many visits to Piro Road, is that how you say it? Piro Road. If anybody that knows, I think, Mr. Harson, you're from Sneets Ferry originally. And so I've always enjoyed talking with you about all that fine seafood down that way. And, uh, I know you've had a, a really, uh, your career in Penner County and Wilmington and, um, New Bern. We, we all appreciate all you've done and many times up, uh, between parks and rags and cemeteries and all the other things you've done. It's, you've done a gentleman's job, but we all appreciate you.
Yeah, I'd like to say one thing, uh, Mr. Harson, you may not, you may, may remember, the first time we met, I think it was over in Dunnville. I thought you was a, a great person for the job then. And, uh, I think you'd be a person that might be missed, but you'd be missed by me. Hope I didn't cause you a lot of problems, I didn't say too much, but I'm, I'm spitting you all over the ground, I got the whole mind. Thank you for the service and I know you have a good time.
Uh, Mr. Harson, I would really, if you, if you wouldn't, I hate to catch you off guard, but if you'd like to make any comments at this time, we'd certainly love for you to come up. And one thing a lot of folks may know or may not know is, uh, I, I'm, I'm always interested in remembering your, your officiating career refereeing. And tell us again, you did ACC games?
Uh, yes, sir, I worked over two hundred, uh, games in the Atlantic Coast Conference and other, excuse me, division one conferences as well, so.
Football, basketball?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Um, I just want to say, uh, thank you. Um, I'll be internally grateful for the opportunity that New Bern gave me and my family. Uh, it's more of a gift than anything else, it really has turned out to be a gift. Um, it's been quite the experience, I wouldn't trade it for anything in the world, so I just want to say thank you.
We, we said that, thank you. Pleasure's been ours.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's have new business, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Yes, sir, um, this Sunday, three P M, Golden Hall, um, the New Bern Preservation Foundation is sponsoring a, uh, presentation on preservation partnership of Mr. Mason Williams and Ben Parrish, a very interesting, uh, informative presentation. They've done it once before, but it's open to the public, uh, be a great time and very interesting in terms of the properties and structures that they have impacted and the neighborhoods, uh, over the last thirty-five, thirty-six years. Um, next Monday, at the National Cemetery, uh, the area veterans groups will be holding their Memorial Day service at eleven A M. That's open to the public and that's a very, uh, very important occasion and event. Um, and then on June Tuesday, June thirteenth, before our next, uh, meeting, Partners in Education will have, be holding their annual spring luncheon, uh, at the convention center as a fundraiser for those. For those who don't know, Partners in Education, the mayor and I both have served with that group in the past, very important in terms of their, their funding of individual classroom activities, programs, and events for students. They've worked very well on behalf of the Craven County School System to do a lot of good things, so it's, that's another good event, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Taylor.
Yes, sir, I got a couple of them, it won't take long. Three Hundred Pollock Street, New Bern, North Carolina, 28563, that is the address of City Hall. I say that to say this, we represent the city, but the residents, if they need to see us, they need to see us at City Hall. They do not need to come to one of Alderman's houses. In the last two weeks, I had an individual, one to show up at my house, one that threatened to come to my house. That wouldn't have been a good day, the lady that came wasn't a good day for her at I. So if you wanna see a Alderman or the mayor, need to make appointment, just come see them at City Hall, Three Hundred Pollock Street. To say that, say this, I don't know if it'd change, but congressmen and senators don't have their home address publicized, we don't need to have it publicized. If an individual needs to know that we live in our ward, they can ask the city clerk, city manager, city attorney. I don't think we need to be publicizing our own address on the website, because any resident can show up on your front door at any time. Very dangerous, extremely dangerous. So I just wanna put that out, that you might wanna consider, or the next ward consider. We wanna keep everything public, but addresses I don't think need to be public, because someone showing up at your house after dark, after nine o'clock, talking about city biddies, knocking on your door, it's not good. Enough on that. City manager, the public and the people here, can we get an update on Dave's Hotel? I know we got a issue.
Yes, sir, I submitted an email to the board this week circulated from Mr. Ruggeri, he had spoken with the demolition contractor, it was the intent plans of the contractor to be there on the 31st of this month or the 1st of June, that is when he plans to begin and commence his work.
Demolition?
Yes, sir.
Temple, thank you. Also, same thing, what's the status on, you know I'm gonna ask Matt too, First Street, Country Club Road, sidewalks.
The request for qualifications was submitted out, basically, we're in a process now of we have to follow very strict guidelines because of the EDA grants, federal funds, it's very important that you follow all those. Judy Hills with ECC is helping us administer and navigate through all of that, that was a contractual relationship that the board approved several months ago. What we've got to do now, we've got RFQ approved, or at, we're actually submitted it to the EDA for approval from them on recommendation, and then we will proceed forward with having it before the board for their approval on the RFQ. That will be a design build project where at that point we will commence the construction on site. As you have already noted, there have been some preliminary improvements made at certain locations along that corridor, prepping the handicap ramp as an accessibility. Once we have that in place, we will come through with remaining portions as we're doing this project, because it is all tied into the EDA funding.
Temple, alright, thank you. Last one, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Harson, again, I just wanna say my, again, thank you for everything, I've called you, you quickly responded, got the all, everything that was an issue, got it corrected real fast, quick, fast in a hurry, appreciate it, I enjoyed you, I, when I called you, you called me back, no stop when I call you, answered, Johnny on the spot, thank you for your service for the city and all local municipalities. Again, do not sit around, I know you're not gonna sit around when you retire, but keep moving on, appreciate it, be safe, Godspeed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended a meeting of the North Carolina Military Affairs Commission today along with Assistant City Manager Chrissy Culler. At 11:00 today, the federal budget came out, and this is not going to be voted, voted into creation, just as is, it is the starting point for discussions, but two things that came out of it that were reported, number one, the money for the lift fan at Fleet Readiness Center East is in the budget, that is significant since the base is our largest employer in the county, and having the lift fan would increase the sustainability of the base and also provide a significant development, economic development opportunity for, for our county as of right now, there is only one lift fan in existence operated by Rolls Royce in Indiana, so we should be hopeful that that money will stay in the federal budget for the lift fan. The other one is a brat is coming. Up until this point, DOT has recommended a base closure review and the Congress has always voted, has always voted it down. The inside the Beltway view now is that they are going to approve it, the date is coming, it will not happen until the year after the next presidential election, which gives us plenty of time to prepare for it, but now's the time to start looking for how is the way that we can make our support for Cherry Point known and visible.
Okay, great. Mr. Stevens, could you give us an update on Trent Road?
What I can tell you is that the work is being performed, not sure, Matt, do you know where they are on their schedule as far as the work completion? We can definitely check up on that, but.
As far as your progress, I don't have an exact answer to that, but I did get a call from DOT today, they are moving forward with it, they have had a couple issues that they just wanna bring the city up to date with, and I actually have a meeting with them tomorrow, 1:00 to discuss those, just so we're all aware of everything that's going on during construction, so probably able to update you a little bit better the next meeting as far as, you know, how things are progressing.
We have, yeah, finish our next meeting.
I think we all, I hope it's completed by then.
Okay, alright.
That'll be a great update if we can say they're done.
I'm sure. Alderman Kinsey.
Yes, sir. Jordan, could you give me an update as well on the road paving in Colony Estates and the piping?
Yes, sir, Alderman Kinsey, our utility contractor is currently working through Colony Estates repairing some aged, deteriorated water and sewer lines ahead of the scheduled resurfing, resurfacing project for later this summer. We're probably about seventy percent through right now on Colony Estates with most of the water main replacement, water service replacement, so hoping to get out there in a couple of weeks, and I think the paving contractor, Matt, is on this side of the river now, so the paving contractor is now west of the Trent River doing work in Maine and New Bern, so hopefully it won't be too long before we get over there and get everything patched up.
So they've paved one street, I think, off of Phillips, have they completed that street and piping?
Matt, Phillips done? Phillips is done. Anything that they come through and completely paved, that means that we are done with the utility work, we're done with any of the required asphalt mitigation work, full depth reclamation repairs, patching, and when they come through and do the resurface, that means everything underneath is completed at that point.
So then we're just asking everyone to just be patient with us and work along with us, and once everything has been completed, we'll be back on solid ground.
Absolutely, we'd ask everybody that's in, or that either has a homework, a business in the communities that we're working, to have a little patience with us, we'll certainly be a better product when we're done than when we got there, so just a little patience with the construction and everybody be at a good place when we're done.
Thank you so kind.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman White.
I want to give thanks to the DOT, DOT doing North, New Bern Road. They did mark it off on the side, it looked like a bike, but it's not quite right, ready for it yet, but there are people riding bicycles up and down that road right now on the bike lane. Also attended Craven Terrace meeting with Mayor and Alderman Blackiston, we had a great time, I had a great time while we was going on the tour. I didn't come back late on that evening, but I heard the meeting was even better. So I'm glad they enjoyed themselves, it was kinda heartbreaking looking at some of the places that I grew up in and some of the so-called stars, athletes and doctors, lawyers come out of some of those buildings. Same time, there was some other things going on that I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about, I can see everything else still done in certain parts of New Bern, but at Woodrow I don't see anything doing, and it was slated for some sidewalks to come off of Semple Street to go around, but we don't even talk about them. And sunny side, there is one more step that's supposed to be done out of the three, in Devil Field, there is one more, two more that need to be done. In Pleasant Hill, we tried to talk about Pleasant Hill getting the sidewalks coming on the main road, but that's DOT, I don't seem to be able to get anywhere with that issue. If I try to, try to do it, I gotta talk to people myself, but most time, it's pretty good when you got people working as a team. I would like to see a team, but I'm not looking at, looking for it to turn out that way. There's a whole lot of things that we need to do in the city of New Bern, and yet, we can go through some areas, every time you look, they're started tearing up and fixing them. I don't, I still don't care how many taxes they're paying, and how much it's supposed to be, if you can, you can count those figures up, and nobody can persuade me anymore that they're paying the county money. If it take almost ninety-two thousand dollars to run from Oaks Road all the way back around just about to Oaks Road, and you see other areas that's getting more and more and more done, and even some areas I stated, it was estimated seven-hundred-twenty, some thousand dollars been done, the budget not, that's a little bit under a certain people's budget, a certain community's budget, and then you look around and I see at least, I know a hundred thousand dollar work, work is being done, so I'm just saying, hey, I'm going back to my old saying, equal rights and justice, I just don't see, I'm gonna close it on that.
Okay, sir. Next time, Alderman Odom.
Yes, sir, Mayor, just one item, don't know how closely you all have been following the state budget, but there is currently a provision in the senate budget that would restrict our North Carolina ALE officers to only handle law enforcement when it comes to alcohol. And I've personally had some involvement with some local ALE representatives, they've helped the city out, New Bern Police Department's done some joint efforts with them as well as the sheriff and the highway patrol. This particular provision in the bill would certainly jeopardize our effectiveness when it comes to nuisance situations downtown that we've had, Alderman Blackiston, I've been in a few meetings of those situations as well, and ALE certainly played a lead part in helping eradicate that particular problem. So what you have in front of you tonight is a very simple letter, that it's a letter of support for North Carolina ALE to keep their current jurisdiction, which they've had for many, many years, and that way they can continue to support our community, and I mean, it's not oftentimes a day goes by, we don't hear something about the drug, opioid epidemic, epidemics taking place in our community, and for me to, I just can't really grasp or understand why you would wanna limit somebody's authority to help eradicate a problem, and we certainly have a problem, so this letter simply says, New Bern Board of Alderman urges our senators to ensure the enforcement powers of North Carolina ALE are not diminished, and we appreciate their consideration as a matter of public safety and security. So you each have a copy of that, and as instructed by the attorney, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign this and send these to our legislators.
Secretary.
Question.
Yes, sir, the motion by Alderman, Odom saying by Alderman Kinsey, yes, sir, Alderman Taylor.
I, I, I do support this one hundred percent, but is this the only senators that we know?
These were the ones that the representatives from ALE recommended that we send to, we can certainly send it to.
I recommend that we send it to all senators in Raleigh area, not just four senators here. I think there's other senators that need the letter as well, I don't think it's fair to you send this letter to four senators and not to the rest of them.
Alderman Taylor, I would be more than happy for somebody to facilitate that, but I wrote these myself and copied and pasted those four addresses, so if the clerk wants to take on that task, if there's somehow where we can.
I commend you, I'm not, I'm not saying anything about somebody, I commend what you did, it's a great job, but if the mayor is signing for this whole board in the city, I think it's only fair that all of the senators receive this letter.
Alderman Odom, question, is this budget change the result of funding constraints? Do you know?
It does not affect funding at all, from what I've been told.
Want to ask one question, and I think I already know my answer, but I think I really would like for this to stay New Bern Board of Alderman by unanimous resolution, but I know we can't do that without having done a two-week thing on that, that would make this a resolution, and as this is, this is more of a, just a new business?
Yes, sir, this is just simply.
And so if we had it by resolution, we would have to do it two weeks.
Well, I have to go draft it.
Yes, sir.
We could, we could, you know, do it at your next special meeting.
So I think they're getting the message, I just wanna make sure they notice the whole board unanimously, if that's so be the vote, but.
When is it coming up for the general?
Well, I think, Tom, you need to get this one up there, I hope they know I would not speak for you without your approval, so I guess.
So where's my, where's my copy?
Sir? Forgive me, I'm, it could be a cover letter, the clerk or somebody could attach, simply saying that, or so unanimous voted at last night's board meeting, the file being filled to.
So again, thank you, that's it, where's my statement standing in reference to sending letters to all senators in that area that's gonna be voted, and all senators gotta vote?
I guess my question would be for staff who may be more knowledgeable of how in their workings of Raleigh, is there a way to distribute this without having to do a individual customized personal letter to each one of them?
Well, we have a representative here from the local.
Start to say, I was gonna turn and look at Chris and see if he had some ideas about how to more efficiently do that. It's a good reason you hung around, I figured.
Yes, sir, thank you. We could help facilitate that in some way in terms of a mailing or a distribution, we have individuals on our Government Affairs staff who would be happy to work with you in that regard. I do agree with the mayor that time is probably of the essence, and the senate has voted on this budget provision, the House is preparing its version of the budget as we speak, so I would need to double check with my colleagues to make sure that what the rules are regarding the letter distributed to all legislation.
No, before you finish, what I'm saying is not all, I'm saying ones that represent this district, Craven County, Jones, Pamlico, not all of them, because we're, these are where.
He's included, so we only have one senator represents us, that's.
But I think it's the other, we, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So just so you know where these came from, this was our senator, and then the president pro tempore of the senate, and then a couple of individuals that I guess sponsored the bill to start this whole process, that's who's included, that's where these names came from, so you.
Could we do a copy too? We send it to these and then copy.
Our local delegation. Yeah, we could do our local delegation very easily, if that's what Alderman Taylor's speaking of. We could add that to the list. So our three house representatives. Yes, yes, okay, sure. If you'll send us a digital copy, clerk, she's got, okay, we'll put that together and get this, if the board chooses to move forward.
We're good to go?
Please, please.
Well, we got the motion. Well, we got the motion and second, so I want favor of motion to say aye. Aye, all voters say aye. Anything else concerning that, Alderman Odom?
No, sir. Thank you.
You have anything else tonight?
No, sir.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes, sir. Just, uh, Mr. Hughes, could you come back up a second? Uh, I believe you made the comment that Colony Estates seventy percent complete, and paving will move forward to, when it's complete. Is that true?
Yes, sir.
Uh, is Craven Street, North Craven Street, is it...
We haven't forgot about North Craven, sir. That, that is completely done as far as the utility work, and we're really just waiting for, I think, some work from the public works crew. When the papers are ready to come back, they'll reset a few sections of the granite curb right, right ahead of the papers, a little fine grading, and they'll be ready to pave.
Okay. If, if we can't get them out there in the next week or so, we need to have somebody go ahead and grade it, because subcompact vehicles are starting to bottom out on the, uh, the roughness, particularly with the rain.
Yes, sir.
A lot of mud, mud holes.
The utility contractor's actually got a, a piece of equipment stage right there. He's been trying to...
Box blade, yeah. The box blade, uh, marginal in terms of effectiveness with what you got there with that ABC stone base.
Okay. We'll, we'll get the utility contractor back out there to maintain the stone this week.
Okay. What else do we have come forward of Aldermen at this time?
Mayor, we'll need you to close session tonight on two matters pursuant to 143, 3181183, um, to maintain our attorney-client privilege. The first is Harold, the city of New Bern, and the second is a legal matter, but, um, I just need to maintain our attorney-client privilege.
Certainly. Sir?
Motion by Alderman, Alderman saying to Alderman Taylor is a further discussion. All favor of motion to say aye.
Aye.
All favor to say aye. Motion carried.